I think about my children and the fact that we need participate in recreational sports. There is significant data that suggests that masks should not be worn during physical exercise. There's also significant data that suggests prior to COVID-19 that masks do not work, they are ineffective for preventing the spread of influenza-type illnesses. My background, I'm a healthcare provider, I'm an occupational therapist. I have worked in rehabilitation for 10 years and for the last four years I've worked in this. Adding a mask mandate for our community when there is legitimate, scientific, randomized, controlled trial studies out there that report that it is not effective, I do not understand how we can move forward as a community and continue to make or decide for the rest of the population that a mask mandate is necessary. What this is already doing, enough is enough. I feel like we need to move forward as a community, I feel like it should be personal preference. If you choose to wear a mask when you go outside of your home, that is your choice. I do not want to be forced to wear a mask when I disagree with it 100% when I'm going out to see the people. When I am going out to other local businesses to try and support them and keep them in business. I cannot, I cannot vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy, we've already had you speaking for all of your time.
I can't respond to what they say.
No, this isn't a debate, this is a time for the public to comment. A gentleman in the back, can you state your name and address, please?
Girls of Rocky, 427 South First Street in Stewart. And I would speak in opposition to this. And I would, I listened to the mandate and I think the issue before the council here is that the request is for an ordinance. And I have a little problem with an ordinance. An ordinance to me carries some connotations around enforcement, some type of fine or potential jail time. You're going to force people to do some things that frankly I believe is a little bit of government overreach. I would fully agree with the lady who just spoke here. We've been asked for not masks since February. And there's been all kinds of sciences, it is, on both sides. The talk in terms of the masks work, the masks don't work. The recent thing that I've read is that the masks are not that effective. If you practice proper hygiene, if you social distance, if you protect the vulnerable, whether it be the elderly or those folks that do have some kind of an underlying condition, we can get past this. But that does not mean that the rest of us need to be subjected to an ordinance that requires us to wear a face cover. I don't believe it's necessary. I would be in total opposition to this. I mean, I'm not a tree. I gotta have my oxygen. I wear a mask pretty much the time, I get edgy. And I don't like it. My glasses fog, I mean, those are inconveniences, I get that. But the bottom line here is, this isn't necessary. And I think that the council should not even consider the idea of an ordinance for this purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to comment on this item?
Why do our public schools require everyone to wear a mask?
We have to have it orderly so everyone's not beginning to speak anymore. Yeah, I recognize you, come on up. You gotta do glasses so I can see you come up here.
I just got here, so I was working. Sorry, Mr. Tom, I'm Tom Reese, I live on 105 Wildwood Road here in Stewart. I own Stewart Bowls Fairtime Lounge. When this all started, this pandemic, my staff started wearing masks, it still is. They were the old shit, whether they're three hours or nine hours. I knew that because I think the public wants them to do that. But I am against the mandate forcing me or my staff to do that, or anybody else. I think it would be very hard for me to go to the door, every time a customer walked in that door, and stop them and say, "You gotta have a mask on." What's that gonna do to my customers? I'm already down 40%. If you talked about being down a couple thousand dollars, I'm down over a hundred thousand dollars since this thing has started. And this will drive me down even further because I'd be yelling at customers. I have no problem making sure they're old enough to drink, let alone wearing a mask. It just would be unbelievably hard for my staff to be able to do that. I mean, right now, we're gonna have to go back to eight at a table. And we can set up tables for eight. But then Joe comes in, he wants to sit with his friends, awesome, there's nine. Or 10 at the table. Now I have to go down and be the policeman and yell at the whole table. I'm not really yelling at them, but they think I am because now they're all mad at me and they walk out mad. And I have upset customers. I know this isn't about a dollar deal, but it is about dollars. And I think it's up to each individual if they want to wear a mask or not wear a mask. So my customers do and some don't. But my staff does to protect everybody in that way. But I don't want to have to force people to wear a mask. I think that would be unreasonable pressure put on my staff to do that. That's all I got.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else in the public wish to comment on this item? Yes, no, you can take it.
My name is Diana Severs, I'm at 222 Wildwood Road in Stewart. I don't have a statement prepared because I just flew in from Ohio. I was there for the last seven days, my home state, and I visited my hometown. And I just want you to know that the level of economic devastation in the state of Ohio right now was beyond anything I could have imagined. And my hometown was practically unrecognizable to me. Businesses are boarded up. Every single person is walking around in a mask. It is a government, the governor mandates the mask in Ohio. The graphs for Ohio look the same as the graphs do everywhere else in practically the world. The virus bites and the virus, the virus came down. So I couldn't, I couldn't understand how this could be happening in the state of Ohio. Just complete and total devastation. Family businesses that had been around for 75, 100 years, ice cream shops, restaurants, just gone. Doors are closed. So I wanted to share that. The next thing I want to share is that these cases that you see being reported every single day are happening because we are testing so many people. The president just released 150 million rapid tests into the market. And those tests are now available right here in Stewart. And it was, it took a while for the testing to get here and to be available. The testing is being contested all across the world. People are very concerned that this type of testing, and I don't want to get into the science of it because that's not for tonight, but the testing is potentially inflating the case counts. I also want to remind everybody that three people have died of or with COVID from Stewart County since the beginning of all this. As of today, Four Corners Health District has on record three people have died of or with COVID. We've only had 24 hospitalizations in this county since the beginning of this. Not this month, not this week. And the chart at the Four Corners District's website is deceiving because when you click on hospitalizations, you might think that's today. I did, so I called the health department. No, it's not today, it's total hospitalizations since the beginning of this whole pandemic. A total of 24 since the beginning. And I have real concerns about measures and actions being taken based on these numbers because we are not in the middle of a pandemic right now. It's over. And our case count is going up because the virus is moving through the community, which is exactly what we want it to do. I would like to use my remaining time to implore you to not make a decision on this tonight, for the council to do some research, and to start with the Great Barrington Declaration, which can be located at GBdeclaration.org, where thousands of doctors across 32 countries have banded together and they're stepping forward and stepping out. And they're finally coming to a place where they can get this word out without being fired because they're gathering and they're signing together, thousands of doctors. And I'm gonna read as far as I can, and if somebody wants to cut me off when my five minutes is up, you can. "The Great Barrington Declaration. As infectious disease epidemiologists and public health scientists, we have grave concerns about the damaging physical and mental health impacts of the prevailing COVID-19 policies and recommend an approach we call focused protection. Coming from both the left and right and around the world, we have devoted our careers to protecting people. Current lockdown policies are producing devastating effects on short and long-term public health. The results, to name a few, include lower childhood vaccination rates, worsening cardiovascular disease outcomes, fewer cancer screenings, and deteriorating mental health, leading to a greater excess mortality in years to come with the working class and younger members of society carrying the heaviest burden. Keeping students out of schools is a brave injustice. Keeping these measures in place until a vaccine is available will cause irreparable damage with the underprivileged disproportionately harmed. Fortunately, our understanding of the virus has grown. We know that vulnerability to death from COVID-19 is more than a thousandfold higher in the old and infirm than the young. Indeed, for children, COVID-19 is less dangerous than any other harms, including influenza. As immunity builds in the population, the risk of infection to all, including the vulnerable, falls. We know that all populations will eventually reach herd immunity, the point at which the rate of new infections is stable, and that this can be assisted but is not dependent upon a vaccine. Our goal should therefore be to minimize mortality and social harm until we reach herd immunity. The most compassionate approach that balances the risks and benefits of reaching herd immunity is to allow those who are at minimal risk of death to live their lives normally, to build up immunity to the virus through natural infection while better protecting those who are at highest risk. We call this focused protection." Okay, I'd like to close by saying those who are not vulnerable should immediately be allowed to resume life as normal. Simple hygiene measures, as has been mentioned, such as hand washing, staying home, and when sick, should be practiced by everyone to reduce the herd immunity threshold. Schools and universities should stay open. So I just ask that you please do your homework before you turn it over to the county attorney for decision. There's a lot at stake here, a lot at stake, and we are a small town. And our businesses can't sustain much more of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to comment on this item? Only once, only twice. I couldn't enclose the public comment of this item. Now we turn back to the council, are there any questions or comments from the council?
I think it was great feedback to everybody that spoke. I think it was great information that we could share with everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean, anyone else? The next step would be if someone wanted to make a motion for some action to be taken. I had mentioned before we started that if there was a desire to have the city attorney draft something, whether it be ordinance or something along similar lines, what we did before, with the hairstylist, we need a motion and a second and a vote to do that. And if not, that's fine too, there's no requirement for any action.
Josh, I got a question.
Yes, Chris, the sheriff. Because I think the people who are here need to know what's been happening at a council level as we've gone through this process. You know, early on, obviously, we're all scared. We didn't know what it was, you know? And these are trying times right now for all of us and what's going on. So with Lincoln and being so close to Lincoln, obviously having our commuter base that we have, we discussed it as a council, what do we do? Do we copy everything Lincoln does and go down that road? Do we just kind of go it on our own? And I think, and anybody here, correct me if I'm wrong in remembering things, I think we kind of looked to Four Corners. I mean, they're our health district in what we should we do. I don't know, I don't know what to think of this, to be honest with you. I have family members at risk, so I wear a mask. And it makes me feel safe. I don't know that it's truly helping or truly not. We've had the science on both sides say yes and say no. So I'm doing what's comfortable for me. And I'm gonna respect what other people want from themselves. So where I work, a mask is required to come in. And I would hope people would respect that. And if you don't want to put on a mask, don't come in. And so if we all just use common sense with each other and be kind to each other, we can get through this. We don't need mandates to make things happen, but we need to be smart about it. Keep the social distance. If somebody's asking you to wear a mask, wear a mask. Or back away further than six feet, 12 feet, you know, back away from them. I'm hoping we don't have to do a directive health measure in that we're at the worst we're gonna get right now. That's what I hope. You know, but if you follow Four Corners and the little risk pile and whatever science they're using to do that, it's inching up. And yes, it could be because more people are testing now. It's not just, it looks worse, but who's to say we weren't there before? We just didn't have the tests. So at this point in time, I'm not recommending an ordinance be put in place. Doesn't mean in the future I won't be somebody who wants to recommend an ordinance because we get to that point, the red and the die, and we've got to take some measures for the sake of our health system to cut this thing. So, you know, at this point, unless there's another council member, I wouldn't recommend an ordinance. But please be kind to each other and just respect each other's wishes and what they need.
Thanks, Chris. And just so everyone else, like what the city, what we've been doing, the governor has issued a new directed health mandate. We pay attention to those pretty closely. Sorry, the governor has issued a new directed health mandate and so, or measure. And so we are, you know, looking at that because we do want to follow what the governor and the state of Nebraska is directing us to do. But as part of that, you know, we will be, with our own boards and employees, you know, we are gonna be, you know, reminding them to, you know, maintain social distancing as you see how we're set up in here, just to try to keep appropriate space. And in situations where that space, especially when that space is impossible to wear masks as well, again, it's recommendations, not a requirement at this time. I have had conversations with the school district, specifically the superintendent, as well as Roger Reamer with, you know, with Memorial Healthcare Systems. And we've been talking about having a social media outreach here in response to the governor's D H M to just let people know and also to recommend the use of masks and social distancing. I also don't think that, you know, a mandate right now is the best way to go. But I think that there's a lot we can do voluntarily. For me personally, like to Chris's point, if I'm talking to somebody, you know, I'm gonna respect their wishes just because I want to be courteous, even if I don't necessarily feel that I would necessarily need a mask. I think it's important to be kind to people and respect, you know, their space as well and hopefully they'll respect yours if you are the one that, you know, would appreciate someone wearing a mask. And so I also work in Lincoln and I have experienced that firsthand going into restaurants or other buildings, public buildings. So I just want people to know that, and that the council know what our plans are moving forward as far as encouraging residents to wear masks and socially distance when possible and what we're doing internally with the city as well. So I just wanted to make sure people knew that. Is anyone else want to comment on this item? You're good.
I was just gonna say, thank you for everyone coming tonight and sharing your thoughts with us. This is probably one of the larger groups we've had in the wild, so it's great to see community engagement on something you care about. I just echo what Chris and the mayor said. And, you know, I think we all do understand the seriousness that we have had cases in the county. We have had deaths. Personally, I've been to two COVID funerals already, so I certainly understand, Nancy, where you're coming from and, you know, some of the things you've shared. But I agree with the rest of the people who've shared that it's just for us to enforce it, just that challenge alone could cause us some resource issues trying to figure out how to get there. So at this time, I agree, we should just wait and continue to monitor and encourage the social media.
So with that, unless there's a motion from the council to take action, I'll move on to the next item. Sign the motion, we'll move on to our next item. This is under, also a council, this is a council request. This is discussion regarding natural buffer zone and street lighting along Carroll K Boulevard from Bader Avenue to Hillcrest Drive. Say that you want to read us off?
Sure. This started originally, ended up here at council by Greg's recommendation to me. In talking with the folks that were part of the East Ridge Homeowner Association who were in opposition to the Carroll K Boulevard, what I was hoping to do is get the city involved in making some commitments to working with them at providing funding and/or services to get a nice natural buffer zone in place between their properties and the new Carroll K Boulevard, as well as some buffered lighting so it's not quite as, quite as much of a distraction and imposition on their backyards in light of the fact that they were all opposed to it. And so my discussion just started initially with Greg and a couple of the people from the association. And we were initially gonna do a memo of understanding, but Greg, I'll kick it over to you now because you thought it'd be better if we would actually discuss what the council wants to do.
Yeah, and for purposes of timeline, so no one gets off and thinks that this is like incredibly late in the game. This was an item that was brought to me in a discussion that Councilman Camperth had with the, some of the neighbors up there, Clearback, I think it was February. And then if you look at just the timeline of the emails back and forth, I think this COVID thing blew up on us and we stopped having council meetings together and everything. I think it just got dropped. There were other priorities for the community and everybody involved. And then it just kind of came back as we started building the project here. So I don't want to make it, make anyone think that this wasn't something that was maybe a little bit older. My intention was, is I didn't think it was appropriate to have the administration draft up some sort of MOU. If this is something that the council is just interested in and wants to do, we can go about doing that ourselves. We don't have to have an agreement. It's on city right-of-way, what's being requested. There are utility poles or lights. There's sufficient right-of-way room there to put in plantings. So we can do it that way. If there would be some sort of other agreement or exchange that the council would want to do, you would probably want that in a MOU. I mean, that could be anything, I mean, it could be anywhere from, well, if they're willing to buy the trees, we'll plant them for them. I mean, it runs the gamut, you know? You could say, hey, we'll put in the trees, but you have to maintain them because they're adjacent to your neighborhood property. Whatever it may be, there's so many ways to cut it. I just didn't feel it was appropriate for us to carmblage right up in agreement and say, here's the agreement, no, yes or no it. And so that was my recommendation back in discussion with the mayor and with Councilman Camperth, is just bring it here, have the discussion generally of this issue, educate. And then if you gave us any direction to go one way or the other, then we could start formulating.
I also wanted to note that the HOA folks have been in contact with Kyle Yurcoski, who's with the Upper Big Blue N R D. And apparently there is resources available from them, not only with, I believe, obtaining some actual plantings, but definitely the expertise. They do a lot of kind of wild habitat reclamation and they have a lot of expertise. And so that's who they would like to work with, not necessarily hire a landscape company or anything. So that's just, I just got that email forwarded today. There's, I don't have any specifics yet, but I know that they are working with or would like to work with the Upper Big Blue N R D on it as well.
So Sid, in that case, are they just asking permission then to do something in the right-of-way? Or they're, I mean, at what point, how would the city get involved in that process then?
I don't know yet. I think what I was, my intention in the beginning was, is that that the city would make a certain amount of commitment to them, whether it's labor and/or resources to get this, you know, like a shelter built or buffer zone in place since it would happen on our right-of-way. And something that would just, you know, help ease the whole situation a little bit with the homeowners there. And also just restore kind of the natural beauty that existed there before the road. So I was hoping that we could commit to some sort of either funds or resources. It's so preliminary at this point that I don't even know exactly what, I just got this today. I don't know what the Upper Big Blue N R D even has available, whether there's grants or X number of trees for a situation like this.
Well, my question was, has the Neighborhood Association said specifically this is what we want? They're just, we want to have a conversation and move this forward somehow?
Yeah, it's being driven by me.
Okay.
So I'm the one who wants to have the conversation.
Totally fine. I think it's very appropriate to sit down with them and talk through what they have in mind before we come back and say, here's what we want to do. Like, I guess I would want to, and we could get that N R D person involved in that conversation, I would assume, Greg?
Oh, yeah. We would just want to, again, there'll be differences, you cut this a long way.
Right.
You probably have about 900 feet of unencumbered area that's not buffered. About 900 feet, I'm guessing, where there is no plantings or anything shielding any of the lights. As you get further north, there's essentially what we call the butterfly garden. And that was a replacement for some of the other green space land that is utilized by the Carroll K projects. We had to offset that with something else. There'll be some tree plantings down there. I think there's an alternating, three species of trees. I don't think they match any of the ones that was on the list. Sid forwarded that to me about right before the meeting. So I did scan it real quick where we're sitting here.
And you got the list sent from the N R D, is that?
Yeah, Kyle Yurcoski.
Okay. What, I guess I would suggest is putting together a meeting to have a conversation. And then would it be appropriate to bring an actual proposal back?
That's what we're here for.
That's what we're here for, we figure that out.
We feel uncomfortable presenting the council or something because we didn't have any idea. We would just be speculating. But I do know Kelly, as part of the condemnation process, some of these issues were addressed, weren't they?
That's correct, yeah. The HOA, as a part of the condemnation proceedings, did bring up the complaint about lighting and that was not included in the damages award. So, and J E O does have a general plan for lighting and grasses and the butterfly garden and some walkways. I would suggest that you meet with J E O and make sure that you have a clear understanding of what's already included in their plans and exactly where those plantings are gonna be.
Well, and then maybe you could use N R D funding or resources to supplement what's already there.
And Kelly, and this is Kelly and Mike, all of you, there's nothing that would prevent the HOA from planting trees and landscaping on their property that runs adjacent to this, to the right-of-way, right?
Correct.
So it doesn't have to be in the right-of-way to accomplish this.
Right, but they run out that farm ground to a farmer.
Well, okay. I mean, if it's important to them, I mean, that's a decision they have to make.
Well, I want to just reiterate, they didn't come to me with this. This is, this is my idea of wanting the city to kind of,
I think that's part of the problem is that.
You know, to extend an olive branch and then saying, hey, you know, because they were, they were obviously on record multiple times being opposed to this road.
As was I.
And so I think it'd just be a good gesture on behalf of the city to want to work with them and do something to, within the right-of-way, to buffer the, buffer the light and buffer the sound and the visual.
I guess my only concern right now is you probably need to have something from the HOA stating what it is that they actually want, because I wouldn't feel comfortable, assuming that we know what's best for them at this point. I would probably want them to tell us what they think is best for them and then consider that moving forward. But, you know, I mean, we, there was a lot of opportunities throughout this process for them to negotiate, you know, things they wanted as part of this. But they, by taking the position of, we don't want the project, they didn't, they didn't ask for anything. They never countered the offer from the state. There was never a true good-faith negotiation. So the situation they're in is a situation that they could have avoided if they wanted. So the situation they're in is a situation that they could have avoided if they wanted to mitigate some of these concerns, but chose not to. Now, some of them were still addressed through the condemnation process that Kelly was describing. So there is, you know, people can laugh at the idea of the butterfly garden, but I assume they'd rather look at that than some of the other, you know, issues that they brought up.
Would it be appropriate for us to just set up a time to present to them what is in the JEO plans? So that Neighborhood Association is aware of what is going to be happening?
Well, I don't know if a meeting is necessary. We can just send them the documents. I assume there's documents there. But if you feel that a meeting is appropriate, you know, we can meet with them outside of the council. We can meet with them as administration staff, or if you, as representatives of their ward would want to be there, making sure to do that if you feel that's necessary. But we were talking about wanting to make sure they understand what the condemnation itself included as far as these considerations, as well as what JEO is planning along it, because it may address some of those needs just by what's already being planned.
Right, that was my thought, is that maybe there won't be anything else that is needed if they had, you know, a real appreciation for what's actually going to happen.
Ellen, as the other member of the ward, are you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable in informing them and making sure that they understand what the plans are to date. And, you know, if they have other considerations that they would like, you know, absolutely willing to hear. If this is all going to be on public land, then it's going to be the city's responsibility to plan and maintain whatever is there. So it's a consideration we have to take.
Exactly.
But, you know, I get that they didn't want, they didn't want the road. And, you know, I'm willing to entertain the idea that we do a little bit of a fence mending if we have the opportunity that seems to be feasible. And if it's something that, you know, doable within our resources.
So you follow that?
Yeah, yeah, so either Greg and you two would reach out to them and get together with them?
Yeah, I would be happy to work with Greg on that.
Okay.
To give you a lay of the lens, you know what I'm going to talk to them about then? What it is they would like in regards to plantings and natural screening. We're going to discuss the lights. We'll show them the light layout. I believe there's approximately 14 lights throughout that. Oh, it's like 1,800 feet length. A lot of those lights are due to the fact that it does curve. Normal standards is going to have more lighting when you have curves in the road, so. So I'm going to discuss that. And then the big ones are going to be the labor, the cost of purchasing any of those items, and then the maintenance long term. Because, again, this is the right of way, but it is adjacent to their own property. And so right of way tree, sometimes it goes in, in a new development, we have the person that owns the property take care of it. And so that's all up for consideration, and we can put all those chess pieces on the board, and they can move them around how they feel fit, and then we can bring that back.
That sounds good.
And then go from there. So depending on what they want, if it's something that can all be handled just by the city, then I don't think an agreement is necessary, just approval by the council. If it's something where they have to act on it as well as us, then there probably should be some sort of MOU.
Sounds good.
Can I get Ellen?
I guess, I guess I just don't want to get into the situation where we do something and they come back at us and say, no, this isn't good enough, or it's not what we want, or it's not. I want to avoid that. So if we can get a plan together, make sure they, you know, whatever it is, if we decide to do something, that they agree to it, and then that's the end of it. I mean, I don't want it just coming back to us saying, it's not enough, or it wasn't right, or it's not what we said.
I think that's why we need to have a conversation with them first, no disrespect to Sid, that I don't want, had to have a plan, and we all like, okay, that's fine. And then they're like, well, we want this tree, and, you know, so why don't you talk to us first? So that's kind of what I want to avoid as well, so I'm with you on that, Ellen. So does anyone else have a comment on this item? If you're satisfied with the discussion, we'll move on.
Good?
Good. Thank you. Next, we have items. We have a well permit application for Doug Overhauser at 360 Lake Wards, Earl Lake. Greg?
Yeah, well, application for irrigation meets all the standards except one. And the last, I think, requirement on the application is that the contractor be licensed within the city. Bonnie, did you hear back from Sarah?
She said as of, that was like at 3:30 this afternoon, he had not been registered.
So my recommendation on this one is, everything else is fine. It's a prove it contingent upon that the contractor is a licensed contractor within the city of Seward, which, there's not a huge, Tim, keep track of that stuff. It's not a huge burden, you know, it's like $20 licensing fee. But it's a requirement of the permit, and so I would recommend approval contingent to that, and we just won't have the mayor sign until they get licensed. If they don't get licensed, then I'll find-
I'll recommend approval based on the contingency of getting a licensed contractor. Can we have a motion? Is there a second question?
We have a question.
One second. No, we have a motion first, or a second?
I'll second.
Your motion is second, and we have discussion. Ellen?
Kelly, are you okay with the contingency type of?
I don't like-
You don't like them? I know you don't.
I don't like contingent legislation at all. I don't think it's legal. So I wouldn't recommend doing contingent legislation.
So what would be your recommendation, wait till the person is licensed and then have them come back?
Yes.
Okay. So based on that, if you're in a discussion, you do have a motion, a second, you have, you either vote it, vote on it, or you could withdraw it. The vote, if you have to withdraw it. But Chris, do you want to add something?
I don't know other than Sid and John Singleton, who else was on council when we had this slew of well permits coming through. And I don't, I remember the council discussing.
Did you go to-
And, and we made-
Did you go to vote a moratorium on those?
No.
No.
We brought it up, but it did not get voted.
I remember that's where I was at too. Kelly got there before me.
We had a, we had a number of them there for a while, I think. And there were other communities who have either done moratoriums or just slightly don't allow wells within the city limits. And so we brought that, the administration, we brought that to the council, but it was rejected, so we don't have anything on that.
And I'm not going to pretend to know water usage, but obviously the well, I'm going to guess Doug is going to use water as yard. You know, but later on here at council, we're going to be voting on utility rate increases. This is water that could be used from the city, and the city receives revenue on, and instead we're going to allow people to put it in wells. I'm fine with this, but we had this discussion in the past, to take a look at this and get some data, and know where we're at. Having well registrations, having well inspections, and that whole scenario. I don't know, Sid, John, Ellen, if you guys remember.
We're nowhere.
They kind of like it.
Yeah, we're nowhere.
So it's going to be used for irrigation purposes only? We didn't see an issue with any kind of inspections or help?
Well, I thought we did.
No.
We do, we have, hold on, hold on, hold on, we do have, there is, there are requirements as far as inspections go. There's restrictions, you can't let your neighbor tap into. We do have current restrictions on the wells. The question that came up then was, we, the city provides all of this infrastructure, all these lines that then go to their houses, yet if you're allowing people to do their own well by bypassing that system, they would still pay, you know, electricity on the well usage typically. But they wouldn't be paying for the actual water, because it'd be through, you know, through their own well. So that's where we had left it, because we did have concerns. We saw what's happening like in other communities as well. So just want to make sure we're on the same page, because that was also here.
I'll be the one to speak. I mean, I have a well, and I have to pump a lot more water, because where I am located, up in Evergreen, I think they dumped all the clay in my lot, so it takes a lot of water. And for myself, you know, paying utilities on water is very, very expensive. So if I want to keep a yard green, and even having a well, I don't use it that much. But I think it's kind of freedom of choice. Again, it's up to the individual. They want to pay the money. I know where Mr. Smith lives, that we had an individual up there that went almost, what, 1,200 feet deep to where he found water. And you don't want to know what he paid for that well. So that's a choice. So if you figure somebody paid $15,000 for a well, I mean, that's a lot of revenue too, that that individual had to pay that probably in a lifetime. I don't know if he would have even had that much in the water though. So that's their choice. I mean, I got lucky, because I'm in the lower part of the town, and my well's not as deep. And there's another person just to the east of me that's over 1,000 feet deep before they get good water. So when you go that, it's so much foot. And if that's up to them, you know, if they're wanting to pay 15, 20,000 dollars for a well, I think that's their choice. And nothing is hooked to my house. You can't do that. I had to go with the permit process. It was inspected. I had a licensed individual out of York, Nebraska, coming to the well digging. It's Piper's, you know, they're well-known. It's no different than us having wells out there on the golf course. We had Sar to do that, if I remember right.
Sar?
Yep. So we have wells, even. So I don't think we're taking anything away from the city. So, because you still have all your water usage, you're using every day for households. So I don't think we're taking anything away from the city. My view.
You need to hire a good water witcher.
Yeah.
So the contractor that's supposed to be doing this is actually a licensed contractor. He just has not signed a piece of paper and paid 20 bucks to the city to be registered in Seward, correct?
That would mean they're not licensed. Your license is issued by us.
They may be licensed elsewhere.
Yes.
Right, that's where I was going. They're a licensed company, they're just not licensed in Seward. Like-
They haven't, we, we don't go looking to find out if they're licensed somewhere else. They turn in their information to us, and then we go, yes, you met all the requirements to be permitted here.
You could assume that they're probably licensed somewhere, but we don't ask for that or nor is it required, because we only care if they're licensed here. But I would assume that homeowner would want someone licensed to do this, but, you know, that's why we wanted to verify that they actually have a license here. So any other questions or comments? So where we stand, we do a motion in a second. If you wish to not adopt this, you can either vote it down, or you could withdraw your motions if you chose to.
One last, Kelly, is it legal what we're doing here or not? Yes or no?
It's my opinion that contingent legislation is illegal, so no.
So your recommendation would probably be to withdraw the motions?
Or withdraw.
I would withdraw my motion to table it until the-
If you have a contingency on legislation, I think you're susceptible to a court challenge.
Okay, no, I'm fine with that, as long as, I want to make sure we're following the legal requirements.
Do a second to do that.
Alyssa?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so we'll withdraw the motions at this time, unless the council drags, otherwise we will wait until we have a completed application, essentially, and then we'll bring it back if we do. Okay? Are you good? Thanks, Kelly. Next, we have a ward, item number two is a ward bid for wastewater outflow relocation project to Van Kirk Brothers Contracting in the amount of $283,700 and 86 cents, including alternate C. Mike?
Yes, so last Wednesday, 11 o'clock, City Hall, registered by six o'clock going out. We had a bid opening, we had five qualified bids. The apparent, well, the low bidder was Van Kirk. With, we had three alternative materials, we had four total. And with that deduct for that alternative C, it was the amount paid for $283,700 and 86 cents, which we've just stated, so.
Not $283?
I'm sorry, $283,700 and 86 cents. And so our recommendation is to accept that bid, including alternative C, from Van Kirk Brothers Contracting.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions or comments from the council? Will we adjourn to a motion?
I'm going to approve the bid from Van Kirk.
The motion, is there a second? The motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Camperth?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Vulcan?
Yes.
You have another council member here.
Hendricks, yes.
Oh, sorry, Hendricks. I'm sorry, was that you?
You're all right, it's good, I came in late.
All right, item number three, approve First Amendment to Project Superior Pet Source SFD OSCO LLC Site Readiness MOU. Mike?
I'll jump on this one.
Oh, Greg?
As you remember, when we got started with the Pet Source Schooler Project over in the rail campus, we signed a memorandum of understanding of our readiness for the site, different capacities for utilities, and also restrictions on Pet Source in regards to some of the utilities that they would be using and utilizing. One of the big ones was wastewater outflow. We were very concerned about the wastewater treatment plant, its hydraulic capacity. And so we had parameters set in there. As always with these projects, until you get the thing built and see what it does, as we talked about, how much water consumption it has, how much discharge it has, much pretreatment it has, electric utility, all those things, you're not exactly sure where you're going to end up until you put it all in the ground. Engineers can do their best job, but once you turn the darn thing on, you just got to see what happens. And so they made slight adjustments in regards to their discharges during the daytime hours to 1,200 gallons per hour. And then the evening hours, which is predominantly when we want them to discharge, it's also when they're discharging a lot of their cleanup, when they're doing their sanitation processes and things like that. They are doing onsite pretreatment, and so everything goes into pretreatment first, and then they release the pretreatment at a given hours, at a given rate. I did ask Tim Rich to wastewater water superintendent and also city engineer Mike Onnabe to review these adjusted changes. And Mike's here, can answer more questions about it, but essentially they said, we have no worries at all on that, on that rate change, so.
Any questions or comments from the council?
What were the previous rates that they had in there?
I want to say, I believe it was, I'd have to go back and look for you on what it was, but it wasn't a significant increase, because I know I sent both of those. Do you have those?
I, from memory, as best as I can recall there, the daytime 17 hours, 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The old rate was 850 gallons per hour. The new requested rate is 1,200 gallons per hour for that 17 hours. The overnight for cleanup shift, that's 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., that's seven hours. The old rate was 2,600 gallons per hour. The new rate is 3,000 gallons per hour.
What's their discharge permit, you know?
In terms of-
What's their requirement, the state?
Well, that's the limit hydraulically, and then there's limits on three different constituents. Total suspended solids, I think that's 200 milligrams per liter. There's a calculation for that, based on that hydraulic load. The organic strength, BOD, that's 300 milligrams per liter. And then fat soils and grease is 100 milligrams per liter, and those are all linked to that hydraulic capacity to come up with a mass per day, pounds per day.
So are they doing their own testing, or who's doing their testing?
They are, you know, they are self-monitoring. So they do have, we did inspect it, they do have a refrigerated sampler at the pretreatment site. And then, based on their permit, I forget how many, three times a week or however often, they make a 24-hour composite and send it to a certified lab, get results back, and submit those results.
And then they also check for E. coli as well?
They, I do not believe they are required to check for E. coli.
Likely what they determined is that they found that they could discharge more hydraulic capacity at the same loading levels, now that it's up and running and they're running it through the pretreatment system.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. Any other questions or comments from the council? Or you're getting a motion to approve?
I'll make my motion first.
Second.
Motion in a second, and if we have a discussion, sign none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Camperth?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Vulcan?
Yes.
Item number four, resolution approving a policy statement entitled Expedited Process for Reviewing Special Designated Liquor License Applications 2020-001. Greg?
Yeah, this came about during a legislative change that I think Bonnie kind of keyed in on a year ago. The state allowed the city or municipalities that issue SDLs to have what they call an expedited process that allows for you to approve those up to 12 days before the event. Where traditionally it was 21, is that right, Bonnie?
Twenty-one or 24.
Yeah, 21 or 24. State Liquor Control Commission needs it 10 days in advance, no matter what. That's like the minimum, minimum. And so when it came through, it was unclear when me and Kelly kind of started looking at this and doing research, like how you do this, because we didn't even have the 21 days in cover. But we were following it because it's the state statutory required amount of days. Sometimes we- like how you do this, because we didn't even have the twenty-one days in, in cover. But we were following it because it's the state statutory required amount of days. Sometimes we were cutting it in under that, but again, we didn't have twenty-one, so doing it within twelve wasn't a big issue for us either, as long as we were getting it in advance of when the Liquor Control Commission needed it. And so we kind of went round and round and back and forth on it, we looked at a bunch of other municipalities. We probably found a few that listed those dates and many that didn't, when we inquired with how they were doing it or why. They said, basically, we handle a lot of this internally, and so we just pass policy guidelines to give the administration the authority, that as long as it meets the way we do the process, that we just do it, and then when the state laws change, as long as they're not substituted to things we require, we just handle those administratively and keep moving on, so the process is clear. So that's how Kelly and I came up with what we have here. It was kind of based off Bellevue, Bellevue?
Papillion, I believe.
I think it's Papillion. This is how they handled it, and so we thought this was a good way to try and roll these out from now, and not have to, every single time they make one little minor adjustment to something, always come back to you, is have policy guidelines that just guide us at the administrative level, and if something's going wackadoodle, I guess you could say, that we can always come back and adjust those policy guidelines, otherwise give us the ability to kind of pivot and continue to move on, and be timely to those requests that we can handle. But still do the things that we require, where the first time at a new place, our first time applicant always comes before the council, things like that. That's all still handled that way, but this gives us the ability to kind of, so you know, move with the punches, so.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Alertish Resolution.
All right. Resolution has been introduced, and designated as Resolution Number 2020 dash forty-one. Would anyone like to move this resolution, be passed in doubt?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call the roll.
With a motion by Beck, thank you. Beck?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman?
Yes.
Vulcan?
Yes.
Kerry?
All right. Item number five, ordinance admitting the municipal code initiating electric rate adjustment, increasing toll, says the revenue is twenty-three percent effective with the October 2020 billing, third and final reading. I'll go and do the reading. At this time, ordinance to amend sections 237 dash three point one through 237 dash three point one three of the municipal code to initiate an electric rate adjustment that will increase total system revenues generated by rates charged to customers for services from the electric distribution system of the city by three percent effective with the October 2020 billing, to provide for billing thereof, to repeal the original sections 237 point, 237 dash three point one through 237 dash three point one three, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. That is the, the third reading. Is there any further discussion